Good evening. This is the regular meeting of the City Council of Southfield, January 9th at 6:00 PM. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Good evening. Councilmember Banks?
Present.
Councilmember Freywell?
Yes.
Councilmember Crum?
Present.
Councilmember Fraser?
Here.
Councilmember Hoag? Councilmember Mandabon?
Present.
Councilmember Taylor?
Here.
You have a call.
Thank you.
Details, head up! Airy colors! Forward march! Left turn! Present, arms!
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, arms! Right turn! Forward march!
Thank you, everyone. I'd like now to call upon our Fire Chief Johnny Menefee. And I'd just, I'd like to say that this past year, 2022, our fire department, I think, hit a new record of almost 16,000 calls throughout the year. And the city continues, as evidenced by the last few meetings, to provide the equipment and the tools and the training necessary for the department to meet those needs. I know we have a brand-new fleet, we have new equipment. The training was evidenced by the, made the news a couple of weeks ago with the, what do you call it, the rappelling off the side of the wall to rescue someone. So we, here at the city, our mayor, our city council, we do provide everything that our firefighters need, and we're glad to have these new firefighters aboard and know that the city always has your back. And we're here to, to help you with your needs and make sure that you do well to help our residents and our business owners. Thank you.
Well, I mean, that, I think that's worth a, a round of applause. So, good evening, Mr. President, Council, Honorable Mayor, city and elected officials, great citizens of Southfield, visitors and friends. I'm, I'm Fire Chief Johnny Menefee, and I'm, I'm honored to stand before you tonight to, to have six candidates for swearing in as full-fledged firefighters of the Southfield Fire Department. These six individuals have been not only have been working hard to do things the right way, but in learning the Southfield way for the last year. They've had a rigorous training of probation over a year where they've learned search-and-rescue, they've learned how to properly ventilate a building, how to drive and how to pump on, on fire trucks, the medical aspect of it, how to RIT training, as well as how to deal with everyday life as a firefighter. And I'm, I'm here to say that each and every one of these members have not only met, but exceeded our expectations. They've been thoroughly vetted from their coworkers, from their, from their officers to the command staff and, and through my office. So I am, I am very excited about the new, the new chapter of firefighters that we have to serve the citizens, visitors and business partners of this great city. I'd like to start with, call them up individually to pin them, and then we can swear them in all together as a group if that's okay. Thank you, thank you. With the help of the Deputy Chief, Deputy Chief Macias, let's start with Jonathan Haney, badge number 335. Where's his lovely wife's gonna pin him? Let's have firefighter Charles Casley, badge number 338. There you go, there you go. Let's have firefighter Michael Seibert. Always wanted to say Seibert, but I didn't, I said Seibert. Badge number 344. So let's have firefighter Gregory Van Hammy, badge number 345. You're doing great. Let's have firefighter paramedic John Kroll, badge number 346. And last but not least, Chloe Window. Badge number 351. There you go. You're getting it? All right. At this point, we're gonna ask our, our city clerk to come up and please swear a men.
Gregory Van Hammy, John Hoag, and Chloe Window. Please, Rachel Van Hammy. I do solemnly swear for firm that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution of this state, and the City Charter of the City of Southfield, that I will faithfully perform the duties of my office of firefighter in and for the City of Southfield, Oakland County, State of Michigan, according to the best of my ability. Congratulations, Father.
Just a couple of quick parting words. So I just want to also thank, kind of mimic on what the council president said. I can't thank the citizens of this great city enough for supplying us with the, the tools and the equipment that we need to, to go out and serve the citizens, as well as city council full approving for all that. You, you definitely put, best foot forward and, and put a lot of faith in us, and, and we, we truly appreciate it. I also want to thank our, our partners in, in the Human Resources Department that have really helped us vet the, the best candidates we can to help serve the ci, the citizens. And to our new firefighters, you know, you're the only ones that can stop you from where you go from now. This is not, this is only beginning. This is, this is not the end for you. And, you know, you, you gotta make sure that you choose your destiny, Mr. Park. I always said I want you to go personally as well as professionally, but it's up to you where you go. If you want to be a career firefighter, paramedic, be the best. We want to train you, we want to educate you, and we want you to succeed. Go out here and serve this great city, this great city. So don't forget that. But wherever you want to go, we want to help you get there. If you want my position, the door is open. If you want to be a lieutenant, captain, paramedic, it's all there for you. But here it is, don't stop. You know, remember, my, my mantra and always, always been, serve, elevate, and educate. You should be touching someone in this great city every day you work on one of those pillars. Don't forget that. My door is always open, the city is always open for you if you need help or you need support. And to the families, I want to thank you for entrusting them with us. You know, and hopefully that can return them the way that you, you gave them to me. They're gonna see a lot, they're gonna experience a lot. I need your help to help us take care of them. You know, watch them, if they're acting different, if they're doing something different, don't act right. Don't hesitate to reach out and call me if they need, they need help, if they need something. It's gonna also take you. But I give you my pledge, I'm gonna do everything I can as the chief to protect them, give them the equipment, education that they need to be able to do what they, what they set out to do, which is serve others, which, unbelievable, what a noble profession that they've chosen to serve. And thank you for raising them in that way, that they want to give back and serve as their career, not their job, as their career. So I thank you, God bless. Hope everyone can be safe. Thank you. Sir?
Chief, I have attended a couple, a couple of these appointments for you. In historical, you might have mentioned, one of that we pulled in members from other cities, and with respect to, we've, as a council and as a city, we've tried to endow your department and the rest of the city with unique things that employees look for. So did we, did we draw anyone from any one of other cities?
I, I don't think with this group.
Did any ones we came from Waterford?
Yeah, we grabbed one from, we, we, I don't want to say we stole him. You know, I always say, get in where you fit in, right? But yeah, one, one from Waterford. But, you know, great city, great benefits, great, you know, great equipment that we provide. This is a, this is not a, this is not a department where people jump around, this is a destination spot. So I think we'll, we'll be seeing, we'll be seeing quite more of that.
Sure. And, and I just wanted to bring that up because I know that one or two others I've attended, we drew other individuals from other, let's say, cities. And as, we want this to be a destination city for, for employees for a lifetime. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Councilman Fraser?
Yes, Chief Menefee. How does this, how close are you to your approved head count in the fire department?
Currently at 102, right now, yeah. I mean, I, I'm, you know, I'm never gonna say I have enough, I mean, there's, we could always do more, more, more stuff with more, with more personnel, but we're, we're, we're doing fine, we're at 100, we're at 102 right now.
And your approved head count is?
Yeah, that's where we're at right now.
Oh, that's where you're at?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you.
Welcome to the new firefighters.
Thank you.
You're all welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting as well. The next two meetings, we're gonna have them. But I think, I think Johnny said the next two meetings, we're gonna have more firefighters. Right, but they're still swearing a men. All right. The next, we have our communications portion of our meeting. The Southfield City Council has established the following rules of procedures for all speakers. No speaker may make personal or impertinent attacks upon any officer, employee, or city council member, or other elected official that is unrelated to the manner in which the officer, employee, or city council member, or other elected official performs his or her duties. No person shall use abusive or threatening language towards any individual when addressing the city council. Any person who violates this section shall be directed by the presiding officer to be orderly and silent. If a person addressing the council refuses to become silent when so directed, such person may be deemed by the presiding officer to have committed a breach of the peace by disrupting and impeding the orderly conduct of the public meeting of the city council, and may be ordered by the presiding officer to leave the meeting. If the person refuses to leave as directed, the presiding officer may direct any law enforcement officer who is present to escort the violer from the meeting. Each speaker will have three minutes, and I'd just like to remind everyone to silence your cell phones. The first person is David Drazen.
Thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm a lifelong resident of Southfield, a business owner since, well, since 66, my family's been here, and I use marijuana. I have a medical marijuana card, and I use it recreationally. And I'm also a landscape contractor, I do a lot of work in Southfield. And I've watched a couple properties, specifically at 12 and Telegraph, go from a junky-looking gas station to a beautiful new building. That sells weed, that sells marijuana. But it doesn't sell it to my neighbors, my friends, and other people that don't have cards. So they're, they're just incredibly limited, as well as the other facility in Southfield. Times have changed, it's different. It's, it's, it's controlled by the state, you know what you're getting, you're not meeting someone on the corner, the, it, it just, I don't have a lot to say, it just makes all the sense in the world for these places to be with the times and allowed to sell recreational products, not unlike bars and liquor stores and everything else. But we're losing out to the people in Ferndale and Lululeek, these other communities, because we don't have it, these stores are hurting now. And I think we should make some changes for it. That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next, we have Keith Harris.
How you guys doing today, Keith Harris? I'm glad we got some more responders, I've seen the work they done in my community. I done seen three rescues by the Southfield Police Department, we need them. But we also need fair prosecution in this city. You know, just like we come into this room, you lay the rules out, well, we gotta have the same kind of rules for our community. We cannot go around allowing people to attack people at the voting polls, spit on people, jump on people, and, and endangering children and other residents. The rules got to be the rules. Now, what we're disappointed about, it's been two months now, and there's been no prosecution of this individual, not, no prosecution. They got a full, unredacted videotape, what I would advise each one of y'all to watch. This is just unheard of. You know, we talk about public safety, we talk about love thy neighbors and everything else, but this family has been nothing but trouble since they moved here. Seventy-plus police runs to their house, mysterious fires happening to their vehicles. Come on now. And now this incident, now, we got a reason to move on them. Because whatever they did at their home, whatever they did to their vehicles, we may not like it, but when they took it outside the home, took it to a voting pole, a public school, now we can move on them. We can get, I'm, I'm, I'm actually just looking forward to getting therapy for this individual. I think she's clinically unstable, I really hope I can have our day in court, that's all we're asking for, our day in court. I believe deeply, if I was a white guy, she would have been arrested the same day, or that week. But for some reason or another, this is a black-on-black crime, and it's being swept under the rug. I, I find it deeply unfair to me, my family, I feel unsafe, my family feel unsafe. We should have the same rights that police officers have. Police officers go around knocking out mentally ill people, or either shooting them. Now, do we have to start preparing ourselves to defend ourselves against the mentally ill in this city, or is our prosecutor gonna do her job? All I'm asking for is, is rules. Make the laws and the rules like what's in this auditorium work for everyone. It shouldn't be gender bias, and it shouldn't be race bias. Thank you.
Next is Stacy Jackson.
Good evening. Stacy Jackson, Southfield resident. I'd just like to piggyback what my husband has said. Two months ago, I came before you and explained an assault that took place against my husband and I while we were at the voting polls. A sitting city council person witnessed it, chairs of much of our Democratic Party witnessed it, poll observers, watchers witnessed it. It's unfortunate that when police authorities arrived, they would not hear from me even though I had been assaulted. When I indicated that I had been spat on, it was unheard. They did not take my name, they did not take my number, the only thing they asked was my age. Now, I might say I, I look pretty good for my age, but there's three things you can tell about me right away. I am black, I am woman, and I am far beyond my years of being carded, of not being an adult. What I'd really like to say is that it's unfortunate that unconscious biasness exists, and I hate to see that it exists in our city. There is no reason that this person has not been dragged in front of a Southfield magistrate or a judge to account for what happened that day. We know in this room that there's been residents, black men particularly, that have been arrested and hauled before a magistrate for doing far less. There's been disagreements at the polls where they were pulled off. A one-man protester against a bank jailed. My husband, who called and complained about a zoning ordinance over a phone message on a weekend, by Monday afternoon, he was all in, was swat. So I mean, a person who can assault residents at a voting poll on election day that just coincidentally happens to be a candidate, and nothing is done in two months, is appalling. It is shameful and is disgraceful. Now, I'm asking you, my concern is that with the restraint that I held being spat on, the restraint that I had watching someone place hands on my husband unnecessarily and unlawfully, the fact that this person has not been held to account in two months lets me know that we made the right decision by not defending ourselves. Because clearly, if I had wiped the pavement with this person, it would be me at Oakland County Prison fighting to defend the fact that I was defending myself when someone assaulted me. So I'm here to say and ask, what is this council, our prosecutor's office, what is this city going to do about the threat that took place to us on a public ground, on voting day, on election day, by a candidate that was witnessed by a sitting city council person? This is unacceptable.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Ms. King has an update on this.
Yes, I'll go right ahead, Ms. King.
Yes, thank you. Um, this matter, I believe, was reported to the police department, but there is a process, and it can be reviewed.
Is your, is your mic on?
The light is on, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh my, okay. Sorry about that. So, the process is that they reported the, uh, made a police report, but then at that point in the process, there's an investigation by the police department, then once that's done, it's either sent to the city, um, our office for review, or it's also sent up to the county. I remember the last time that they presented this, Mr. Jackson, or Ms. Jackson, Mr. Harris, that I did look into it, and it was sent to Oakland County Prosecutor's Office in Pontiac. And so, it is not in Southfield right now, as far as who's looking at it, it is being looked at by Oakland County Prosecutor, and I will have our office try to follow up between the police department and my office and see if we can get any feedback.
Okay. Thank you. Next, we have Michael Zax.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Michael Zax, my address is 20720 North Home Street in beautiful Southfield, Michigan. I was born, raised, and educated in the city of Detroit, but have spent most of my adult life living in Southfield. It's a beautiful city. One thing we all know, as we become seniors, you develop some issues, some more serious than others. I have chronic arthritis, I have a mild case of COPD, and I also suffer from atrial fibrillation. None of those is life-threatening, they're more chronic than anything else. The unfortunate part is none of them qualify me for a medical card. So I enjoy ingesting gummies and those kinds of things. Unfortunately, since I don't have a medical card, I can't shop at Dreams Cannabis, which is about a mile from my house. Forgetting that it's a beautiful facility, I think it would serve the residents of the city of Southfield well to be able to buy recreational products at that location. For me personally, buying them there as opposed to driving, say, to Detroit and not to spiraging Detroit, but I would be much more comfortable buying product at, say, 12 and Evergreen than I would at 6 Mile in Wyoming. So again, I think it's a beautiful facility, I think it would serve the residents well, those who want to indulge in adult-use products. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Louis Williams.
Good evening. I am coming again before you to express my concern and great trepidation regarding the issue of recreational marijuana being sold in our fine city. I have a number of concerns. One of my main concerns is the impact that this could have on the One of my main concerns is the impact that this could have on the youth of our city. We do not need a recreational marijuana business enticing, attracting, or drawing attention from our young people. We want our youth to focus on doing well in school and developing themselves as quality individuals, making contributions to our society. We don't want marijuana as a distraction, recreational marijuana as a distraction. Going to school on the bus or whatever, seeing the recreational marijuana business. We don't want that for our young people. Another concern is that we, we talk about Southfield being the all-American city, and I agree, I, I like that. And Southfield being the family city. That sounds positive and productive to me. Not Southfield, the marijuana city. You want some marijuana, just go over to Southfield and get all the marijuana you want. Another concern is there's a good chance that crime would be impacted in the area of the recreational marijuana business. And certainly, we don't want to do anything that's going to increase crime in our fine city. Another concern is living, our residents imposing that on any of our, I'd know, I, I certainly would not want to live near a recreational marijuana business. And I don't think we should impose that on any of our citizens. So I urge that you consider these factors and reject this plan to have recreational marijuana businesses open in our fine city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Tracy Pease.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Tracy Pease. I am with Allies Becoming Co-Conspirators for Justice. I also work to protect voters' rights and work to expose voter suppression on Election Day. On this past Saturday, I sponsored a forum for the constituents of CD-12, which is where I met Stacy Jackson and Keith Harris, where they informed me of an altercation that happened on Election Day in the city of Southfield with a candidate. I was informed that she physically assaulted Keith Harris and spat in his wife Stacy's face. Now, there are a couple of different issues that I'll be addressing with the state, the State Election Regulatory Bureau, because she was a candidate, as well as a medical licensing board, because she is a doctor. She spit in the face of a constituent and then informed them that, oh, she had COVID. But my issue today is how are people assaulted in your city? The police are called and do nothing. I, you know, she jumped on Keith's back, spat in the faces Stacy. There are witnesses, but no charges. Correct me if I'm wrong, but if she would have spat in the face of a police officer, she could, she would have been arrested for assaulting the police. If she spat in my face, if she jumped on the back of my white husband and the police were dispatched, she would have been arrested. The police were called, dispatched, didn't speak to the victims or the coworkers. In fact, there's video of the assault that according to the school board, because this happened at Levy Middle School, which is where the polling precinct was, that they sent it to the police department, and the police department said they sent it to Oakland County prosecutors. And I'm wondering why? You, you have a city prosecutor. Why is this being sent to Oakland County with no charges? Why is the city of Southfield not handling an assault that happened in their city? So I just need a couple of questions before I escalate it to State Rep. Hoskins and Senator Moss. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. King, can you?
Yes, I can respond if I may. Can you hear me? I feel like I have to, like, put it really close. So again, as I stated earlier, it was sent to the county. Also, maybe people don't understand, we can only prosecute for misdemeanors of 90-day or 93-days or less. So based on what everybody is saying that's come to the podium this morning, there are a lot of factors that we have looked at. The county, on the other hand, has higher, you know, the authority to charge someone with a felony. So we cannot. So if there's a murder in the city of Southfield, obviously, it's going to go to the county. So with everything that we've looked at in this police report, from what I was told when it was first presented to the police department, looking at possible witnesses, the fact that it was on Election Day, that's another reason why it was sent to Oakland County. And that's all I know right now. I will reach out to the police department tomorrow to see if there's someone, one of the detectives can, you know, check up there and see, you know, where it's at as far as if they're going to authorize it or not. And I will let council know. But that's why it's in the county, because the city prosecutors can only prosecute misdemeanors.
Okay. Thank you. Next, we have Evan Carter.
Good evening, Evan Carter, also lifelong Southfield resident. I would be remiss if I didn't say this. There we go, there's my clock. I celebrate when people have health victories over longstanding illnesses. But I would also be remiss to say that if you've looked at the studies on marijuana, just consuming marijuana or cannabis, not the, the surveys of people smoking it but by medical doctors, the medical effects of this are actually quite controversial. Just, so that's aware. So here we are. We're looking at the issue of recreational marijuana in the city of Southfield for everyone 21-years and older. This was rejected just three years ago. The city just decided to go medical, not recreational. In that time, the realities of what cannabis does to a human's body have not changed. The realities of how these things impact a community at large have not changed. The only difference is we now have two dispensaries in our community. We have Loom Cannabis Co. and Dreams Cana. And that's important, because they're having an issue. Their medical business is being eaten alive by recreational, and so they want relief from the city. What I'm arguing today is that the benefits that they would see from this are far outweighed by the issues that would come about to our residents. Because they will come. The question is, how much? I don't know, but they will come. I, I did a little bit of research over the past several months. Found just, here are just three data points, because I'm, I'm sure you read data all the time. There's a stronger association with violence to cannabis than alcohol. And there's a number of reasons for that and complications and demographics, but the reality is what it is. Cannabis has a stronger association with violence than alcohol. You can look it up in studies, it's empirical. The second thing is cannabis use in adolescence and early adulthood increases the risk of domestic violence perpetration and victimization by 1.2 to 2.4 times. Thirdly, cannabis users are, and this is empirical, are more likely to develop psychotic illness than non-users. It just is what it is. So when pressed, and when community leaders that I've spoken with have spoken with the city, asking the city, why are we doing this? I don't get a lot of response, other than this chart right here, of the profits of these two dispensaries being eaten into by the fact that adult use is eating medical alive. And I just ask that you would look at the community, especially our schoolchildren, and see, how is this impacting them? And what are we doing for all of the issues with drugs, which are unfortunately already in our schools and already in our community? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That concludes our communications for this evening. Next on our agenda is a presentation of a joint resolution in recognition of Lieutenant Colonel Felix Selden. I'd like to ask the mayor and Councilman Brightwell to go to the podium, and Ms. Selden, please join them. Mm? Yep.
I just wanted to state that Felix and Barbara are lifelong residents of the city of Southfield. And more than 20 years ago, I got a chance to meet Felix. And he and his wife urged on me to get involved in community service. So from that particular standpoint, I'm not saying they had a cost on them on city council. I'm just saying that I met them, I met them 20 years ago, that's all I can say. But anyway, I initiated this with the consultation of the mayor and his agreement, I initiated this joint resolution. Simply because Felix is such a dynamic individual. He was a large man, but he was a very substantive man. He had a lot of things going on. And the resolution reads, "Where Southfield's longtime resident, Lieutenant Colonel Felix Lester Selden, was an exemplary educator, devoted husband, father, brother, son, friend, and extraordinary military veteran, passed away December 23, 2022. Mr. Selden was recognized as an intelligent, courageous, and visionary leader. Gentleness, humility, generosity, and kindness were the core of his being. And whereas Felix Selden's former education career began in Bessemer, Alabama, whereas Felix graduated from the University of Detroit in the spring of 1957 with a bachelor's degree in education and a second lieutenant, he was commissioned in the United States Army. Later that summer, he received a teaching certificate with the Detroit School Board. Felix was called by the Army into active duty in 1958, on March, and remained active through March of 1978. Felix returned to the University of Detroit 14 years later. As a student in the master's program, he graduated in 1992 with an MA in Educational Administration. Whereas after completing 20 years in the United States Army, that was in 1958 through 78, and 10 years with General Motors, 1978 through 88, he decided to pull down his teaching contract from Lansing and return to teaching, giving back to the community where he was raised. He was dean of students and taught sixth grade, sixth grade, at Weber Junior High School. And whereas Lieutenant Colonel Selden is a recipient of the National Defense Medal, the Purple Heart, Army Commendation Medal, Vietnam Service Medal, Vietnam Campaign Medal, Meritorious Unit Commander Commendation, two bronze stars, the Vietnam Cross. Whereas Mr. Selden was also president of the Detroit Military Information Council, president of the Five Delta Capital Educational Fraternity, the University of Detroit. Detroit Council of the Boy Scouts, a distinguished lieutenant governor of Michigan District Optimist International, a member of the Detroit Economic Club, board member of the Children's Aid Society, life membership in the Jewish War Veterans, life membership in the VFW Post 2644, 2645, chapter, chapter number one of the Michigan Disabled American Veterans Association. He was president of the Dr. Martin of the King Task Force in Southfield. He was founder of the Southfield Veterans Commission. He was a member of the Southfield Commission on Senior Adults and Southfield, and the Southfield Compensation Commission. Now therefore be resolved that we, the mayor and council of the city of Southfield, city of, county of Oakland, state of Michigan, do hereby, do hereby recognize and celebrate the many great accomplishments and attributes of Lieutenant Colonel Felix Selden. And a life well lived. He was, he was, excuse me for breaking up here, but I guess that's me. He was a valued member of the community, the nation, and served in sacrifice, and his service and sacrifice will not be forgotten. Signed, June, name for January 2023 by the mayor and the city council. Thank you, Barbara, thank you very much.
So I just want to say, there's no more pain. There's no more suffering. And my husband is in a better place. We lived a wonderful life, but only because of our friendships with most of you, all of you, not the city of Southfield, but Oakland County and the state of Michigan. And I am so honored to have received this on his behalf, and I will cherish it forever. Thank you.
I move that we approve the resolution for Lieutenant Colonel Felix Lester Selden as presented.
Support. It's been moved by Councilwoman Banks, supported by Councilwoman Taylor, to approve the joint resolution in recognition of Lieutenant Colonel Felix Selden. All those in favor?
Aye.
And the opposed motion carries. Thank you, thank you, Councilwoman Brightwell and Mr. Mayor for that resolution. It was definitely deserving. Next on our agenda, we have items for discussion and/or action. Item A is the Oakland County Michigan Works Southfield Wagner-Pizer Grant Acceptance. And the next three items, A, B, and C, are all going to be by the, the same presenter and for the same types of grants.
Good evening, Council President and Council. My name is Lisa Strasky, and I'm the Career Center Manager for the Oakland County Michigan Works Southfield Center. I've been with the city for over 30 years. Thank you for the opportunity to request approval for our grants and for all your support over the years. Michigan Works provides job seekers with support, training, and services they need to get back to work, obtain better employment, and credentials. We also assist employers with training support, training grants, talent recruitment, and layoff aversion. We consistently exceed all performance measures and have the highest rate of participants entering training and obtaining credentials and employment amongst the Oakland County Michigan Works agencies. Currently, Michigan's unemployment rate is around 4.3%. Southfield being slightly under that rate at 3.6%. In Detroit, it's around 6.4%. Our programs continue, continue to assist with keeping our unemployment rate lower than the average in Michigan. I am requesting approval for the three workforce grants that we administer. The city outlays the funds in advance, and then we're reimbursed. The first is Wagner-Pizer Employment Services, which is the primary grant that assists job seekers in finding employment and businesses with finding qualified talent. Customers receive one-on-one service to review resumes, offer guidance on positions that would suit them, and computers are provided onsite to assist with their job search. We are seeking approval of the attached resolution for the grant amount of $303,432. Should I proceed with this?
Well, let's take these one at a time. Council, do you have any questions on this specific grant acceptance? Okay.
Mr. President. I'd like to move approval of the Oakland County Michigan Works Southfield Wagner- I'd like to move approval of the Oakland County Michigan Works Southfield Wagner.
Pizer.
Grant acceptance or acceptance.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Cruz, supported by Councilwoman Taylor, to approve the Oakland County Michigan Works Southfield Wagner-Pizer Grant Acceptance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The second is PATH, the Partnership Accountability Training and Hope Grant, which is designed to enhance the employability of those receiving public assistance and enable them to become competitive in the labor market. Participants are mandated to attend sessions to improve their skills. A structured program provides attendees with guidance to aid in their success. We are seeking approval of the attached resolution for the grant amount of two hundred and sixty-one, three hundred and sixty-six dollars.
Councilwoman Brightwell?
I'm in support of this, but I'm trying to understand the sentence, and I'm not sure how to interpret it. In the second paragraph, it says additional funds may become available through the state, but will not exceed the total budget approved by council. So does that mean that we might not be spending the total two sixty-one? If we get some dollars from somewhere else, it would reduce the two sixty-one? I'm not sure I can understand.
The, there's always a chance that carry forward can happen. So we have the grant amount of two hundred and sixty-one, and then sometimes there's money that carries into the next year from that grant amount. Did that answer your question?
Uh, no, not quite.
Okay.
So, I'm not trying to, I like this, I'm just trying to follow the, follow the numbers or follow the money. It said additional funds may become available through the state, but it will not exceed the total budget approved by council. So I'm not sure what that is telling me. When I read it, it seemed like we will get a rebate if you get some money from the state. It still won't exceed our budget, but the additional money, I would like to see it go somewhere else if you're not going to use it.
If I may, Mr. President, first of all, council adopts the budget in June. These funds from the employment and training grants are on the state fiscal year starting October. So when we put the budget together, we put the budget together at two point seven million. And then as the contracts are released from the state, we bring them forward and have them approved. These funds are highly regulated. I mean, they can only be used for employment and training. This is a completely segregated accounting system. If there's extra monies, they do not come back to the city in any way. We're entitled and paid an administrative fee as well as a performance fee for serving the clients in each of their respective grant categories. So we build a budget at two point seven. As funds come in, we ask council to approve that. And so far, we've been pretty consistent with how we've modeled that year after year.
I'm not questioning the validity of the dollars being spent. It's just a sentence there that maybe historically in the future, those sentences will come out because it tells me that if additional funds become available through the state, we still won't exceed our budget. So where does that additional money go? I mean, we're not going to put, it's not, we're not going to exceed the budget. This is confusing and or misleading. And perhaps in the future, we need to take that sound. Who drafted this? What was it intended to tell us? If additional funds become available, if additional funds become available, that's less money out our pocket. So, okay, well, if it makes sense to you all, right?
It does, and it makes sense to my finance department where it needs to make sense.
So why not?
Just to be clear, Lisa, your approved grants that we've approved, you're about one point, you're about one-six?
Our grants are right around two. For the WEOWA grants and the Wagner-Pizer, we are at just right around there. With the additional grants, we're around two point seven million. We do not exceed that. We have to spend all of that grant money. In certain circumstances, we are allowed to carry forward a little bit of money, about ten percent. But we have to spend according to the eligibility and all of the guidelines that are set forth for those grants. There is no giving back money. There is no, it has to be spent exactly the way it's intended. So that money has to be spent, or it would be recaptured by the state.
Sure, I understand a hundred percent. I'm not going to beat this to death. But whenever you say additional funds may become available. So that right there tells me that if more money comes in, that goes, that adds to that two point seven. So, um, it's, well, maybe in the future, that sentence should come out because let me know, you would get additional money.
Or if additional monies came in and we exceeded the two point seven, as part of the action, we would amend the budget. So if another half million dollars came in and we, that grant amount put us over the two point seven, we would also amend the budget. I think the sentence is simply stating that we won't exceed the budget. If additional funds come in, we'll amend that line item accordingly.
Okay, well, in the future.
I'll concede that it could have been worded better.
Yeah, well, worded, worded so, you know, two plus two equals four, you know, because this right here just indicates something else.
But if another two comes in, we'll amend that number to be six.
Right, so, and it's just that, I know you guys do good work, and I appreciate I've visited with you since I've been on council. One of my first visits was to your Michigan Works, so, okay, well, it makes sense to you all. I appreciate it. Thank you.
We'll make sure we put that in the next letter we do.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions from council?
I move, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve Oakland County Michigan Works County Partnership for the whole grant.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Hoag, for the approval of Oakland County Michigan Works County Partnership Accountability Training Hope Grant Acceptance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The third grant is the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act that WEOWA grant. This grant is to support innovative strategies to keep with changing economic conditions and seeks to improve coordination with other state and federal and community programs. It provides employment and training services to job seekers for high-demand fields and supports employers with their talent needs. The grant provides assistance to adults, dislocated workers, and youth. We work with the school districts to ensure that students are kept apprised of our programs and opportunities to learn about career pathways. We will be reinstituting the MI Career Quest in November, where students will learn about new fields and explore, and so they will be poised for success when they become job seekers. We are seeking approval of the attached resolution for the grant amount of one million, one hundred and eleven, four hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars.
Council, any questions?
I move that we support the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act grant.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Brightwell, to approve the Oakland County Michigan Works Southfield Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act Grants Acceptance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
And?
Mr. Chair, I'm wondering for the listening audience, this is a very big deal, and it helps a lot, a lot of people. So I'm wondering if you might take a minute or two to explain where this money goes. You know, I don't think anybody heard it goes to our Career Center.
And I would also, I was going to add, you know, how would people contact you to take, to take part in some of these grants, so?
So we are located on Civic Center Road at two-one, four-one-five Civic Center Drive. We're Suite one sixteen. We provide, all of the services are free. We're open between eight and five. Anybody can come in and seek services. We have funding for training in high-demand fields. We provide career assistance for individuals who are looking to improve their situations if they are underemployed. We also assist youth with finding work experiences in the city. Does a lot with our youth and provides opportunities for work experience in various departments here. So there's opportunities for everyone to take advantage of all of our services. We have regular workshops that we provide that anyone can take advantage of. They're also virtual, so they can see those things online if they're not able to come into the center. There's computers for their use, as well as individual career advisors to assist with whatever their needs are in terms of finding employment or increasing their skills.
And how do people, do you have a phone number people can call?
Our phone number is two-four-eight, seven-nine-six, four-five-eight-zero.
Okay. You know, I think it's also just important to mention that this is on the campus of Lawrence Tech. It's, I think it's the only Michigan Works office on a college campus.
It is.
And it's also, I think, one of the most successful or the busiest, the highest success rate.
As I mentioned in earlier, the, our performance measures, we have exceeded, year after year, all of the performance measures that are set out by the state, by the county. We negotiate every single year. We exceed all of those, all of those performance measures. We have the highest rate of training individuals and the highest rate of credentials being earned.
Thank you. Councilwoman Fraser?
Yeah. I think you may have just answered the question after the mayor asked. But we gave you order of a million dollars. Somebody comes in and says, I'm not, the job I have doesn't provide for my family. I would like to improve my, the possibility of getting a better job. Can I have this training? And you say, yes, you can have this training. Do you follow through on that, find out, did they really do something with it after you spent the money to help them upgrade their skills so that they could be having a better job?
Absolutely. They receive assistance with a career advisor. They work with their career advisor for, not only during the training period, so the training's six months. They follow up and they're talked with at least once a month. In addition to that, once the training ends and they find employment, we follow them for a year. So we call them monthly to make sure that they are still employed. If they're not employed, what can we do to assist? We have a variety of supportive services that we can provide if someone's having difficulty on the job, if they need, you know, bus tickets, if they need assistance with gas, if they need childcare assistance. There's all kinds of additional supportive services that we can provide so people can retain those positions. So yes, we absolutely follow during that period of time, not only while they're in training, but afterwards for one year as well.
Okay, now, you said that you met all the requirements that the state has set down. There's no program that's a hundred percent.
Correct.
So what is the target for improving the lives of the people that take advantage of this money that you're going to be getting?
Well, the goal is always that employment. So full-time permanent employment for individuals is always the goal. The rate that we're required to have in terms of meeting all of our goals is eighty-five percent.
Okay.
So that is what the state requires, that is what Oakland County requires, and we've exceeded that every single year.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Is it Councilwoman Taylor?
Yes, hi.
Hi.
Question. Is there a process for employers to post positions with you?
Yes.
And if so, how can we?
So a business can contact us directly by calling the same number, two-four-eight, seven-nine-six, four-five-eight-zero. We do have a business services representative on staff. Her name is Dawn Davis, and she can, and she will get back with that employer, go through the process of how to post those positions. We will work with that employer to provide all of the different services that we have in addition to letting them know about all the grants and opportunities for funding that may be available as well. There are lots of opportunities with the state for apprenticeships. We also have the Going Pro Talent Fund, which helps companies with their incumbent employee training. Thank you.
Councilwoman Brightwell?
I think, Fred, you might confirm this. I know throughout audit of Plant Moran, the audit grants and numerous other things, so this would be a part of that audit. Is that correct?
As a federal grant, this is part of our OMB federal audit. And we just recently finished our annual audit on the cities. We have an additional three months on the federal funds that's probably still slightly in process. The major numbers are done, but the federal funds and their audit.
Okay, I just wanted, I was aware of that, but I know we have a separate, when they do grants. And I felt a hundred percent that this fell under that, that gives me a little more assurance that that sentence that's there is useless. Okay, thank you.
And if I may, Mr. President, Lisa, you moved to that new location when, five, six years ago?
Six years ago.
So six years ago, the council, we relocated the Career Center into John Gray, from John Grace over to LTU's campuses, the mayor said. The only Career Center on a college campus, yet better transportation. Our business development team, our chamber, Lisa's team is constantly working with the business development folks in the city, Oakland County, and the state to feed employees to employers. And it's, their folks are looking to better themselves, people are looking to go back to work, but also employers looking. So it's a very circutive process. I want to remind council that goodness, back in fourteen when we were issued one of our bonds, one of the reasons why we couldn't get a triple-A bond rating, the city's unemployment rate. We heard Lisa mentioning our unemployment rate is now lower than the state. At that time, we were slightly higher. Last week, very exciting news out of the city of Detroit to see them come down and fall below seven percent. As a region, we all grow. If you recall in our bond rating, one of the standard important comments was, our disposable income isn't high enough. Well, people going back to work, bettering themselves, disposable income should rise. And I'm real pleased where the unemployment numbers are. And I think a lot of us are, you know, the economists are telling us fifty-fifty chance that we may hit a recession. And having a program like this helps people out. We've seen a shift in the workforce. People who typically worked in hospitality areas, retail, are no longer willing to work in those areas because of the COVID exposures. So there's quite a bit of realignment happening in the workforce, and the Career Center is a great resource. And we're really fortunate to have that tool. Very few cities our size have a Career Center that works where city council gets to have some say in how they're structured. And that is pretty much, the feds put the rules out, the state follows, but we're involved in that. I think the only other city in Oakland County is Troy?
Troy is the school district.
It's the school, so I think we might be the only city.
I believe we are.
And then Detroit, so you folks need to recognize that, you know, it's an extra thing we do. And I really like the direction that we have our Career Center on a college campus. Shelley and I spent forty-five minutes with the leadership of LTU. Council only in the last two months spent an evening with LTU at a council meeting. What they're doing in the certificate training program, it's not always going to be about a degree, but maybe a person who gets a specialty certificate in a certain area and find themselves, you know, making, bettering themselves and having a larger income. So I think what we do is pretty exciting. I think regarding Career Centers, my thirty-five years is probably the most polished in its presentation. And look, a lot of times this gets stuck in the old basement of someplace. And we've got a, you know, we've made a good investment, what council's done with our Smart Zone, Centropolis, and that integration. And you've got some expansion. New conference room will be coming on board, and that'll be another room for both Centropolis, the Accelerator, and the Career Center.
Thank you. Councilman Hoag?
Yes, so I think I personally used the services back in twenty-fourteen. You were at John Grace then, I think so? You were at John Grace then, I think so? But my question is twofold. One, are you allowed, and if so, is there any partnership with the high schools as students become eighteen? It's great that we're on the campus of Lawrence Tech, however, we know not everyone wants to or has the ability to attend college and, as you stated, certifications or training. Is there any partnerships with the school system, the high schools?
Absolutely. We've been working with the Southfield Public Schools for as long as I have been there, so over thirty years. At one time, we were in the schools weekly, where we provided onsite career counseling for anybody who was interested. That's, that isn't the case any longer, but we do provide employability skills workshops for the students. We, we come in for career days, we help with career fairs. So we're there often, we get called in. We're also part of the Business Advisory Council with the high schools. So there's a lot that we're doing. We also have apprenticeships that we, we're sending information regularly to the schools so that they're aware of all the opportunities. And towards the end of the year, we go in, we talk with the students, we do mock interviewing, and we do this with all the high schools in Southfield, yes.
I know Shelley has already suggested that I come visit you, and I look forward to that, and I certainly will, so.
We would love to have you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Okay.
Yeah, I move.
We, we voted on this?
We did.
Yep. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next is a receive and file of Public Act two oh two.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move that we accept, receive and file the Public Act two oh two of twenty-seventeen, Protecting Local Government Retirement and Benefits Act Annual Report of twenty-twenty-two.
Support. It has been moved by Councilwoman Taylor, supported by Councilwoman Cruz, to receive and file Public Act two oh two of two seventeen, Protecting Local Government Retirement and Benefit Acts Annual Report of twenty-twenty-two. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Zorn, did you want to comment on, on that at all?
Yes, this is a state requirement, and the city continues to be in a strong position with both our Southfield Employees Retirement System as well as the Police and Fire Retirement System. Our funded ratio for the SERGE group is just under sixty percent, fifty-nine point nine percent, and for our Police and Fire, we're at seventy-two point five percent funded. All, all systems combined are both doing well. Many of our peers are still struggling, and Southfield continues to be in a solid position regarding our Police and Fire pension system as well as the Southfield Employees Retirement System.
Okay. Thank you. All right, next we have the authorization to purchase mobile stage and parks for the Parks and Recreation Department.
Good evening, council. I'm here to seek authorization for the purchase of a mobile stage. Actually, it's called the Showmaster Mobile Sound Show. It's model MSM twenty-eight hundred. Our existing, most of you know, our existing stage is over forty years old and is unsafe and cannot be transported or used. This new stage will be used for all of our special events, our tree lighting ceremonies. We do a lot of collaborative events with Police and Fire and other community groups when using that stage as well. With the advanced technology, this particular stage will have some of the modern features. So we'll have the hydraulic leveling system, handicap access lift. If you were out there for the tree lighting ceremony, you saw that in action. It has LED lighting, it has the acoustic walls for the stage. We will be purchasing it with your authorization, of course. We'll be purchasing it through Century Industries out of Sellersburg, Indiana. We do go through the HDAC Purchasing Cooperative Contract. As you know, that gives the public agencies the best pricing for this particular unit. We will have some customization costs. With Century, they do provide a skirting, and they also brand it for you and logo for it for you. The branding is, and logo is very expensive. We've got a couple other vendors that we can go with as soon as we receive the stage. And the skirting is also not user-friendly, and the quality is a little suspect. So there is a vendor that does a lot of mobile units, and Oakland County goes through them to get your customized skirting that goes around the bottom of the stage that you can't see underneath. The cost of this stage is one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. We will be going through Equipment Revolving Fund, which will put us at fifteen thousand, eight hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty cents per year for the next ten years. We did have a question during council president about the life expectancy. It's about twenty-five to thirty years. We do have some good maintenance, and training will be provided from Century to our staff so that we use the, the system correctly. Our staff went out and looked at this particular stage at Oakland County, looked at the setup, looked at how they transport it, and so we were very impressed. It's the exact same unit that you saw for the tree lighting ceremony. We, going forward, if you authorize this, there is about a six-month wait for this stage. That's what they're telling us. Actually, they say four to six, but I'd rather tell you six. We all know what it's been like for delivery of product and equipment for our city, so, as well as everyone else. So if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Councilwoman Banks?
For some reason, I thought the stage in the, that was used for the tree lighting ceremony was ours. When I asked someone, they're like, yes, this is our stage. And didn't we approve purchasing this in the fall? Or maybe we just talked about it?
We had it in our budget, in Equipment Revolving Budget, but we worked hard with our internal departments to move this forward. So that stage that you saw had Oakland County Parks on it, that maybe someone said to you, this is exactly like the stage we're going to get. That could be, as a result of, of the order and the six-month delay, we've actually contacted Oakland County, and we have that stage reserved for all of our events. So we have kind of a partnership in being able to reserve that stage until we get our own. So you'll see that stage again.
Okay, definitely was nicer than our other one.
Oh, my goodness.
And you felt secure walking on it. Also, do we have the proper vehicle to tow?
We do.
This particular stage?
We do.
I mean, is it, I'm assuming it's lighter than our old one?
It, it is a bit lighter. It has to do with the length, but yes, we are able to, to tow this particular stage. There's some hydraulics to it that gives some, some ton, tonnage to it, but it is, it is a bit lighter than our last one.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Councilwoman Brightwell?
You church on this, you church on this briefly, anything that's jumped out at me would be the additional cost for customer, you know, additional cost. You have an estimate of that additional cost?
I don't offhand, but I, I can tell you just through my experience in working with Oakland County, you'll see their mobile stages, and you'll see what they call wraps on some of their units, their mobile units. Those wraps can be anywhere from two thousand to seventy-five hundred dollars, depending on the intricacies of it. On our stage, it would say Southfield Parks and Recreation. It would have our City of Southfield logo and the City Parks and Recreation logo. So I don't see our costs being extraordinarily high for that, but I did want to let you know that upon receipt, we would have additional costs to, to customize it and to brand it.
Yeah, sure. It's, it's about like when we've got police cars, we got to upfien.
Absolutely.
So you, you, I'm getting from you that maybe an additional ten thousand?
No more than.
No more than ten thousand?
Yeah.
Okay. And you brought this up too, which is my question. What is the life expectancy of this particular platform?
Approximately thirty years, thirty years. But I can tell you that we had ours for, actually, it's over forty years, it's more like forty-six. We had ours for a long time. Oakland County has stages that are twenty and thirty years old, and, and really, if you maintain them, if you close them up properly, if you store them properly, we really can extend that, that life out for that particular piece of equipment. We have quite a few events that we do internally, both with our events as our department and then our citywide events. We have the ability to rent that stage out, but really, when we rented the stage that we had earlier, we were very selective as to where we took it, if it was on the highway for any amount of time, if the stage was going to be overnight someplace, we really didn't take any risks there. So really, it is about how you maintain it and, and your usage and, and just managing the piece of equipment really well.
So attention will be played toward maintenance and upkeep?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay, well, thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Hoag?
So Councilwoman Brightwell asked my first question, the lifespan of it. What's the plans for the old stage?
It, right now, is in auction, and there are no takers. So there's still another day or two. They, they may get it for maybe some scrap metal of some sort, but really, it's, it's, it's not stable. We went through years of having it inspected and welded, and at a particular point in time, everyone knows when the framework has a crack, it's very vulnerable. And so after a period of time, it becomes unsafe, so.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes, I just have one quick question. Where do we store this?
Back by Park Services, right back by, over our newly surfaced parking lot into the Park Services area next to the building.
Oh.
So it can be outdoors.
Oh, okay.
It closes up nice and tight. Yes, sir.
Very good.
Yep.
Thank you. Councilwoman Banks?
And to piggyback off of Councilwoman Cruz, can we store it indoors anywhere on this property? Because that's where it really will take a beating, is in the wintertime with all the snow and the ice.
Yeah. I, I would have to take a look and see if it, logistically. I mean, it's a great question, but we have so much equipment and so little roof space. So if there's an opportunity, if there's a way that we can do that, we certainly, we certainly will.
Okay. Because there's also those, I don't want to say they're, they're portable, but I think they're, they stay in one place, like a covering for.
Yeah, like a carport.
Not a garage, yeah.
Yeah, like a carport of some sort, yeah, or extend it out. We can certainly take a, take a look at that, and we will. I'll report back to you on it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Frazier?
Yes. Is the skirting on the, on this new stage, is it removable?
Yes.
And where is it stored?
It's stored inside the stage.
Inside the stage?
Yes, sir. So it'll travel with it.
Okay. Also, is wired for LEDs, is it also wired for sound?
It is. It is wired for sound. It doesn't have its own sound system. I'm sure a lot of you know through our concerts and through entertainment that a lot of the artists and a lot of the travelers like to use their own sound person. Our shell and our sound receiver and our acoustic walls will play very well to their, to their sound systems that they bring in.
Okay, and when we rent it out, if we rent it out, they have to carry their own insurance?
Oh, absolutely. We actually would take the, we would transport to and from, so we would not allow them to do that. But I don't see that really happening here in the next couple of years unless we have a neighboring community who would like us to rent it to them close by. Really, where we, where we rented it in the past, even BT before Terry, we were renting it to Berkeley, we were renting it to Oak Park in Ferndale. The furthest stage, the furthest location was Tiger Stadium, and we did it for one of the locks down at Comerica. But it got to the point where it just wasn't safe even to travel there. We would take the back roads and stay off the expressway and keep our speed down, but after a while, that's just not smart. Garnett Carr and our risk management, as well as myself, just can't embrace that. So we'll take a look at when and where we transport that unit. But yes, any, any, anyone who would like to use any equipment that our city has, has to have liability, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, council? Councilwoman Brightwell?
This is a pure hypothetical, and this is probably just.
I don't know hypotheticals.
Do we, we definitely have a need for two of those stages, stages, do we? Two new ones, not necessarily the old one, that old one is gone.
I know, I'm thinking. If I came up with a quick answer, you'd, you'd be suspect. I, you know, if we had two, we could have it for our, our home events and, and rent another one out. But to be honest with you, whenever you do that, you have increased maintenance, you have another staff person that you have traveling. So I think one stage right now will suffice our, as well as our city's needs. As I said, you know, that stage is used at our concerts, they're used at our, most of our special events. We've used them with the domestic violence events that we've had that we do at the Police Department and outside agencies. We can take it to our other parks if need be. We can take it for groundbreaking ceremonies, whether it's at Sims or Miller Park, and we'd like a stage to be able to, to house and showcase our folks and, and our city leaders. So we could transport that stage and use that stage right now pretty well in-house. So I don't really see a need right now for a, a second investment in that area.
Okay, no, this is just hypothetical?
Absolutely.
Councilwoman, Councilwoman Taylor?
Good evening. Two, two questions. First of all, I agree with Councilwoman Banks, when we were on that stage, it was day and night from the.
Wasn't it beautiful?
It was beautiful, much, much safer. So kudos for that. And I don't know if you already stated it or not, but how long would it be once we approve, if we approve this tonight, would it be before you get the new stage?
They're saying about six months.
Six months. Okay. And how much are we paying to Oakland County right now to use their stage, whenever we use it? Is it?
Well, I don't remember the cost, but because of our frequency of use, we're able to, to rent the stage at an affordable price.
And with our partnerships and things like that?
Yes.
I know you work very closely.
Yes.
And they are familiar with you, so I know you worked something out. I was just curious.
Absolutely. No, I appreciate the question.
It was a buy one, get one.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions, council?
Mr. Chair?
Councilwoman Brightwell?
I move that we approve, we approve the purchase of a mobile stage for Parks and Recreation Department as presented.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Taylor, to approve the authorization to purchase mobile stage for Parks and Recreation Department, hopefully sooner than six months.
Hopefully.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have a presentation and discussion regarding zoning ordinance text amendment.
Good evening. With me tonight is Jeff Spence, our Assistant City Planner, and Mario Ortega from McKenna Associates, as well as Nani Wolf, who'll be assisting us in our presentation. As you recall, council directed the Planning Department to review and investigate developing adult-use recreation marijuana regulations. We've been working closely with our, the city attorney's office. Tonight is discussion only, but we're going to give you an overview of our recommended ordinance changes to allow for adult-use recreation. This is a first in, in many steps. First is to have your discussion. We have a public hearing scheduled for next Tuesday. You may or may not act on, on anything at that time. Subsequent to that would be the enactment. Part two is the creating a licensing ordinance for adult-use recreation, developing priorities and, and other things that will be vetted through the Legislative Committee first and follow concurrently with the zoning ordinance, most likely in December. With that, we do have a presentation for you. You should have received the recommended regulations, PowerPoint, and some other documents in your packet. Again, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Ortega, and we'll be jumping in as appropriate, and then our entire team will be available to answer any questions that council may have.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
As mentioned, my name is Mario Ortega. I'm a principal planner with McKenna. We're urban planning. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
As mentioned, my name is Mario Ortega. I'm a principal planner with McKenna. We're a urban planning and design firm that works predominantly and exclusively for municipalities in crafting master plans, zoning ordinances and other types of regulations. So, we're here as a resource for the city to develop an approach on this topic of adult-use marijuana. So, in my presentation, I'll familiarize, I'll just briefly go over the existing ordinances and the differences between all the different statutes, and then point out our recommended approach for the city to regulate adult-use marijuana. So, typically, this is a reference to, and more colloquially known as recreational marijuana, but the state's official term is adult-use. That basically means that any person over the age of 21 years of age or older can purchase marijuana for their own personal consumption. This is regulated by a state agency under the current heading of the Cannabis Regulatory Agency, or the CRA. In the past, it was various different terminologies, as the state likes to do with their regulations. And specifically, the adult-use marijuana is regulated by the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act, or MRTMA. And that outlines the various topics and areas in which adult-use marijuana can be regulated. Currently, the city does have ordinances regulating marijuana for medical use. And this is going to, so in addition to the zoning requirements for medical use, where they are located to specifically address zoning-related topics, such as their location, and other aspects of the use to make sure it's compatible. And then the city also has regulations for the licensing. That's where it's the approach for how an applicant, application is received, the process for reviewing, and also enabling the city to have specific characteristics for adult-use, for the marijuana uses, specifically quantities, quantity of facilities that could be located in the facility, in the city, and other regulatory aspects. So, this is going to be a key aspect to our discussion tonight and moving forward, is that there are two separate ordinances. The zoning ordinance, which was reviewed by your Planning Commission, is specifically for the location of where these would be located, the types that would be located within the city, and other aspects specific to the use. Then, you have the separate licensing ordinance. So, we're going to, so this is going to be a key, as I mentioned, moving forward, we're going to be, throughout this, what we're recommending is consistency, consistency with previous policies, because when it comes to this type of use, it's important to, we believe it's important to start off with an initial attempt, see how that these type of uses interact with, and ensure they are compatible with the existing uses, and then, if that's the case, move forward if there's a need for additional uses. So, when it comes to the key differences and similarities between current medical marijuana and adult-use, it's the same agency, CRA regulates both medical and adult-use. The powers, as I just outlined, between your zoning ordinance and your, how you set your fees and your licensing, those are the same. But then, the different uses, the different aspects of them is that, obviously, is that medical marijuana is allowed for any person that is deemed by a doctor that could obtain a medical card, whereas recreational is for any person 21 years of age and older to have their own private consumption. So, one other key aspect is that there are two, there are different zoning, enabling, excuse me, different regulating statutes at the state level for these. So, we've utilized in the past, under your medical categories, for, under the MMFLA, which is a Michigan, which is a medical, Michigan Medical Marijuana Facility Licensing Act. So, there's a lot of similarities between these two statutes, medical versus recreational. They all allow for growers, processors, secure transporters, safety compliance. And one slight different aspect is that one is, when it comes to the facility in which a person obtains the marijuana, under MMFLA for medical, it's a provisioning center, whereas in MRTMA, it's a retailer. One other key aspect of the difference between medical and adult-use is that the CRA is enabled by the state statute to create new establishments that they feel are necessary for the market. So, the CRA has created several new types of facilities, such as the consumption establishment, an event organizer, or an excessive grower. That is someone that has a large number of plants available. But another key aspect that's within the statute is the fact that you, the city by no means has to allow all the uses. Currently, the city has opted out, so that is the action which prohibits currently adult-use recreation uses. And so, in this exercise, you can direct us as to which type of facilities should or should not be located for the adult-use.
Can I stop you?
Yes, please, at any point in time, feel free to stop me.
Under the adult-use categories, what is a microbusiness?
So, a microbusiness is intended to be a, what we would terminate, or is a stacked facility, where it's a smaller-scale operation in which 150 plants are grown on the site. They're also processed by the same business, and they're also sold in the same location. So, that's a different aspect, that's one type of facility that's unique to the adult-use category.
They're selling the plants or the processed product from the plant?
The processed marijuana for consumption. Yeah, they're only, the businesses are only allowed to sell marijuana that's ready for consumption, either in a smokeable state or in a consumable state through the edibles and that sort of product.
But the microbusiness, they have both on premises, but they're only selling the consumable product. Does that, can I understand that correctly?
Correct, that's correct, yeah. It was intended as a reaction to, under MMFLA, the size and scale of the facilities required and extensive upfront costs. One other aspect of the marijuana industry is currently, they cannot obtain normal financing. You know, the banks are not allowed to provide funding to these business entities, so they have to have alternative means, or mainly cash upfront in order to operate. So, under the medical facilities, that was only certain individuals could get into the business. So, the idea from the state was to allow for a smaller-scale operation, to allow for other individuals to get into this business as it is. And that's mainly because, you know, there's other aspects too, under the MRTMA, we'll get into in a moment, with regards to an attempts by the state to, to basically understand that in the past, the regulation of marijuana, it's been termed by some, by most people to, that it's been disadvantaged to certain aspects of society. So, they want to try and provide, compensate for that historic approach.
Thank you.
So, and just to quickly go over some of these other facilities, they're all relatively the same. On the slides are just the official definitions that are within the different statutes to, although their terminology isn't exactly the same, the intent is for the same. So, a grower is intended to grow a plant from seed to consumable state. Within the adult-use, Class A, B and C have 100, 500 and 2,000 marijuana plants. Under medical, was slightly different. Class A, B and C was 500, 1,000, 1,500.
If I could, Mario, if you could go back to the slide. The state does allow stacking these different classes, so an operator may get three Class A, four Class B and five Class C, if the state does allow it.
In the same location?
In the same location, inside the same facility.
Each one is a separate process, but you can get multiple, multiple classes at the same facility. So, in theory, if the facility's large enough, someone could have 20,000 plants.
Normally, you do see those in larger, excuse me, in townships or in places where it have a large amount of acreage available for that type of use. And so, they're a lot, excuse me, they aren't a lot, but the excess growers are typically found northern more peninsula and the west side of the state.
Councilman Banks?
Can you give an example why someone would have a Class A, B and C versus maybe two Cs or two Bs? I mean, I don't understand, I don't understand. You're talking the numbers, so it would be 2,600?
It all depends on their particular business endeavor and how many they want to do. If, for example, they did want to have 26, 2,500 plants, they would have a Class C and a Class B, or, it also depends on, I'm not sure, I don't believe that the state actually limits the actual numbers that they provide. But it's just a matter of what the applicants end up applying for and what they're approved for. So, they, but they do typically tend to stack, go right to the Class C and then stack the Class C licenses. So, 2,000, 4,000, 6,000.
So, we presently have three locations in Southfield that are grow centers, that's what this is referencing, correct? And then, how many?
Well, this is, the grow facilities are under medical marijuana, and they're capped by the size of the facility. This is, the adult-use allows these multiple classes to be grown in the same facility. And during our tour, we saw many different proprietary ways of growing and stacking plants in the same place, whether they were done horizontally or done vertically. So, that'll come into play based on the size of the grower and the size of the facility.
Thank you.
Councilman Frazier?
Yes. You said the banks are prevented from funding this business, or is it the banks aren't willing to take the risk because the federal government has not changed the nomenclature on what marijuana is?
Well, basically, it's, to the best of my knowledge, because the federal regulations have not been changed, the banks are not allowed to provide the funding sources for that. There are certain credit units within the state that are operating for, to process the cat, the sales amounts from businesses in that aspect, but they're not a funding source for loans, basically, to start them up.
Hmm, okay.
So, the, I believe, and I'm not an economist, but I believe the federal government would have to remove, either change the banking laws or move marijuana from the Class I designation. Just to go over then, the other types of facilities. A processor is one that basically takes the raw plant and extracts resin to create the infused products, to create your consumables. The adult-use definition is slightly different, but it's the same intent, where they process and package marijuana. Secure transporters are those individuals that are allowed to take marijuana product from, between a grower and a processor and a provisioning center, to make sure that it's secured effectively. Safety compliance facilities are those facilities that are, that test all the different, all the marijuana for, for things for certification of potency, presence of contaminants, and those other ways to ensure that the product is of a, meets the state's standards. And then you have your, as I mentioned earlier, medical marijuana has provisioning centers, adult-use marijuana has retailers, it's just a different terminology, but within these facilities, they are intended to be, have separate stack, separate inventories. So, if you were to go into a facility that had both medical and retail, medical marijuana would be in one location and the retailers in another. The state is very specific with regards to how the facilities are organized.
Can you go back to the safety compliance facilities?
Mm-hmm.
They're both testing for contaminants. Is that, I'm trying on, I'm looking at the definitions. Can you explain that a little bit further, between medical and adult-use?
They're very much the same, because the whole intent is to have a laboratory, test the marijuana that's registered by the state, and it's also going to be, that's grown by the growers and sold by the retailers. And so, the intent is merely to make sure that the quality of it, in terms of, I would think more, it's more about the contaminants, make sure that it's not anything that gets into the marijuana that would be detrimental to any person consuming it.
For example, could be pesticides that could be dangerous, or certain levels of THC, or other contaminants that wouldn't be healthy.
And the CRA then administratively sets, works with scientists to determine the appropriate levels that are for those different contaminants and that sort of thing. And they do, CRA does a very good job of sending out reports and advising everyone of when a particular facility might not meet their standards from the safety compliance, and then they're therefore, they're dealt with in terms of making sure to rectify the situations.
Okay, thank you.
If I could, we currently allow these testing facilities, anywhere medical testing or medical facilities are allowed, in our Office Service District and so forth. There's no special requirements. If it's permitted as a medical facility, then we allow the testing facilities per the state law.
Okay.
And coming from the zoning standpoint, that's one of the reasons we take a look specifically at these different type of facilities, because we want to make sure the zoning ordinance locates these in those places in which they'd be most compatible with the adjacent property owners and adjacent businesses. It's important in your zoning ordinance to have an approach that's going to make sure that it's compatibility with these, from these uses, because with certain, certain types of these facilities, most specifically the grow, they have certain aspects that could have negative impacts on those. So, that's what the zoning ordinance will get into, is that the types of topics that we regulate for each of these different facilities. And once again, it's going to come down to what we're recommending, which is consistency, consistency with your approach for medical marijuana should be for the adult-use. So, with that in mind, we are proposing that the same locations in the zoning ordinances, in the zoning ordinance, and in the, in the city code, the, as mentioned, the city attorney has been working on the licensing ordinance and dealing specifically with those aspects. The, what I'm just about to point out is the zoning ordinance sections. We would be recommending, like as mentioned, that these facilities have the same type of approval process, that being the safety compliance would be a permitted use in the OS, ERO and B3, that the grower, processor requires special use approval in the IL or the I1 districts along Eight Mile. Secure transporter is also requiring special use approval in the IL or I1, and then provisioning centers requiring special use in the B3. Once again, this is consistent with your current medical standards.
Can you go back?
Yes.
Was there any, is there any thought that since this is recreational use, for the distancing requirements, to maybe extend those out a little bit further? Was there any thought behind that?
It's possible. As mentioned, we were considering those different aspects of like what types of regulations we might want to tweak, given the different characteristics of it. But our initial, in the end, our initial conclusion was to be consistent, and that makes it the most, the ordinance most defensible when it comes to its application. Because, for example, sometimes the marijuana users can be, let's just say, somewhat litigious. So, we want to make sure that the city has its most defensible stance. And so, we're, so the idea is to treat them equally. And the good thing about actually your existing ordinance is you have this 500-foot separation from a larger amount of uses than other municipalities. I've written ordinances for several municipalities. Uh, I, I've written ordinances for, uh, several municipalities and they, their, their, their approach was to limit the, um, the types of facilities, but increase the distance in that case. But in your case, because of the, uh, the, you know, I, I do think that having that, that wide range of uses that are, could be most detrimentally affected by marijuana uses is, is appropriate. So you have it against five hundred foot separation from residential zone property, residential uses, the drug-free school zones, schools, parks, religious institutions, childcare facilities, and other adult regulated uses. So that's a, that's a, and the, and the other aspect of the exercise is that we can utilize a GIS, um, mapping system to put out those buffers on a map and indicate where the, uh, facilities could be located in the city.
Question, Councilman Brightwell?
Well, I just have a general question. You might have answered this already. Uh, with respect to transportation, uh, I'm, I missed that. Can we have both medical and, uh, recreational in this, being transported by the same vehicle?
Yes, um, actually, I'm, I'm not sure about that, to be honest. I would think as long as that, um, uh, applicant in that business had the licensing for that, there are probably aspects that the state would just make sure to keep it separated. But I would think that, um, provided the, the business has the, the, the right licensing, they could actually transport for it. One other aspect of the transporter is the fact that, um, no municipality in the state can, can write an ordinance that would prohibit, uh, transporter from driving through your community. So if there's someone's driving from a grower up north down to Detroit, if they're going through Southfield, there's nothing that, that can be done about that. But that's because, and it, because they are licensed and regulated and, and intended to, uh, do everything securely and, and sa- safely.
Okay, thanks.
If I could, every unique plant, whether it's medical or adult use, has a, a unique barcode that is, that is tracked and scanned at every level of the process. So that would, would be able to be, uh, sep- separated from medical to recreational. You could track that, you could track each plant.
Sure, okay. I'm, I'm just, I'm, well, anyway, I was, uh, on, you know, growers, transporters. And so you're saying that transporters can make their deliveries to both recreational and medical?
Provided they have the right licensing.
Yeah, yeah, provided they're licensed, okay.
Yes.
Councilman Cruz?
Yeah, I just had a question about, um, is pawn shop still a part of this?
Yes.
What we have now?
It's a fifteen hundred foot, uh, sa- I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, I was just going to ask what, why?
If I, if I could, Mr. Councilman Cruz, um, we want to be consistent with the way we treat other, uh, adult regulated uses with the separation. So pawn shops are only included as far as being the separation that's required from them for these types of uses, consistent with other special land uses that we have in the ordinance.
Okay. So you said the other adult uses, does that include, um, like, liquor stores and stuff?
Well, alternative financial services, adult regulated uses, um, lo- loan, um, those types of, those type of uses have to have a fifteen hut, fifteen hundred foot separation. I don't, I don't believe the liquor, the liquor stores are part of our, um, separation requirements. They have their own requirements, but they're not part and parcel to marijuana has to be so far from a liquor store.
Okay.
So then just to get a little bit into, um, what will eventually be spoken about with regards to your licensing ordinance, some of the different aspects that are in the licensing ordinance that will be addressed on that topic are, um, the li- the standards and procedures for the licensing. And a key aspect to that can be, uh, the creation of a priority selection process for applicants. The licensing will also deal with a number of these facilities. The zoning ordinance is strictly, once again, the districts in which they're located and the other, uh, characteristics of the use. Whereas the quantity of the uses would be regulated by the licensing statute. And then other, uh, non-use, non- that, non-land use related standards will be in the licensing. Specifically, that would be the opportunity if you wanted to address anything related to social equity requirements. The state does have its own program for social equity. They have a different, um, pro- uh, aspects of a social equity plan that they, and then they have different, um, ways in which a applicant can be registered as a, as a social equity partner. However, a lot of that at the state level is in the end for them to have the reduced fees. We, we think the key to this will be, uh, if you want to, uh, enter into that discussion, uh, looking at, um, basically outlining the different items within a social equity plan and letting the applicants, uh, pre- present their, uh, proposals. Because, uh, you do not want to get into too many, uh, requirements with regards to, um, what is included in the social equity plan, because that can get, uh, very complicated and, uh, you can start, um, cause a lot of different issues. We don't think that's appropriate. So basically, uh, just in summary then, uh, with regards to the zoning ordinance itself, these are the different sections within the zoning ordinance as proposed. Once again, it's consistent with the medical, metal, or marijuana approach. Uh, the permitted establishments are the, uh, safety compliance facilities, uh, processors, growers, secure transporters, and retailers. Uh, all other, uh, facilities would be prohibited at this, at this time. So the excess grower would be prohibited, the, uh, consumption establishment would be prohibited, and, um, the, uh, event organizer would be prohibited within, within the city. The location would be the same districts as currently for the medical-
If I could, Mario, we're, we're recommending that those, those three more intensive uses, that we take a pause on those, enact the five that are compatible with medical marijuana. And at some later point, if you want to, we could, we could revisit those other types of uses, the consumption, the special permitting, and the excessive grow facilities. That's our recommendation at this time.
And I would say that that's in a, a, a very good approach, because a large amount of, uh, municipalities within the state, first, a lot of them aren't even allowing recreational. And then second, uh, these other, uh, ex- additional types of adult use facilities, they're not really, um, admitted in either, as other municipalities at all. For example, the consumption establishment is a whole new concept that only two other municipalities in the state are even on the books as allowing them. And to the best of my knowledge, those facilities aren't open yet. So that, that's not something that, um, there's a lot of experience with. So, uh, it depends on, uh, the city's approach to how they'd like to experience that. But we would highly recommend, uh, sticking, once again, with, uh, those facilities that we know of their characteristics and what they, um, how we can regulate them. So that way we can, once again, be compatible, make sure the compatibility is, uh, is highly, uh, is stressed for these, for these new, new business operations.
Councilman Banks?
Thank you. Um, to our planners, so you're saying that you are going to be recommending a grower, processor, secure transporter, safety compliance facility, micro business, and retailer? And then the new consumption, new event organizer, and excessive grower is on pause?
That's what we're arguing.
Um, is there a reason why we're approving micro business versus, I don't even see provisioning center?
Well, I, 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 I think the, uh, micro business was something we were pausing on-
Yes.
-at this time.
Well, then that would be four.
Yeah, I, I think the way the slide was, it was just a little bit out of order, so I apologize. But, uh, we, we just want to be consistent with the five similar types that we have for medical marijuana. So again, I'll repeat those. Secure transporter, safety compliance, the retailer provisioning center, the grower, and the processor. All other allowed adult uses, we would, we'd like to take a slow-as-you-go approach, see how they are compatible with other municipalities throughout the state, and then maybe revisit that in the future. This is a similar approach that we took with medical marijuana.
So the present provisioning centers that we have will now become retail?
No.
You said retail provisioning.
Well, I, I was, I was saying retailers or provisioning centers are, they're different terms for the same thing. And what should be clarified is that the current medical marijuana facilities would still have to come in and apply through special land use for recreational use. They may get some prioritization, uh, under the licensing part, but they would not automatically be approved, because they would have to get separate state licensing and separate zoning approvals. It's, it's possible that they could, they could seek and receive those approvals to have both medical marijuana and adult use, but it's not an automatic.
Is there a slide here that shows exactly what you just said, what we're, you're proposing?
Could you, could you go back, Mario?
Just in terms of, you mean in terms of which facilities would be permitted?
Correct.
I mean, the closest would be right here.
Yeah, but that's not, that's still not correct. I mean, it's the closest, but that's-
Right, well, this presentation, uh, you should also have in your pack, I believe, the actual, uh, ordinance language. So the ordinance language where it specifically says that the grower, processor, secure transporter, safety compliance, and then it should say retailer, those are the adult uses that were right now in the draft text, uh, suggesting be permitted in the city. And then the micro business, consumption establishment, event organizer, and excess grower are currently listed as a prohibited use in the draft text.
I, I don't think we got the ordinance, did we?
The draft, the draft ordinance was included in your pocket. We, we need to update this, because the micro business was not highlighted. And it should, retailer and the micro business should, should be flipped in the order, so that retailer is consistent with provisioning center. But we, we have to define them, because they're part of the, the state law. But that doesn't, just because they're defined in the ordinance, doesn't mean they're allowed unless council decides to do that. So again, our approach is to, to go with the five similar types of adult uses that match up with medical marijuana to start. And then micro businesses, consumption establishments, event organizers, and excessive grower, we're recommending to prohibit at this time, and then visit that later on.
So in the ordinance, will it say that it's prohibited?
Yes, that's what it says.
It does say that in the draft ordinance.
Okay, yes, when we get to that one, though, because I don't remember reading that. And, and we have to include it? Why can't we just add it at a later date? Why even add it into the ordinance?
We, we have, we have to include it to define it and then to prohibit it. So we define it and we prohibit it in each of the, each of the, um, zoning districts.
Okay, so this slide needs to be updated, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Hoag?
I was just going to say, Councilwoman Banks, in the ordinance document we received, it's on page four, three, eight. It lists the five permitted, um, establishments, and it doesn't have the micro business.
Thank you.
And it does list the, uh, prohibitive establishments as well.
Councilman Fraser?
Is, um, marijuana products and beer and wine allowed to be sold in the same place?
No. They're not.
They're not?
No.
Okay. Because, uh, we got a, an appeal for eight, with eight hundred signatures on it that they want to start selling beer and wine in gas stations and, and so on. Thank you.
Councilman Brightwell?
In, in the state of Michigan, is, uh, I know you indicated there were two locations. But is there locations that are quite similar to what we want to do? You know, are they, could they consider to be, uh, best practices?
I, I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
In, in the state of Michigan right now, I know you mentioned two locations in the state that were seemingly doing things the right way. But with, with respect to where we are headed, are there anyone currently that is operating that you would consider to be best practice?
Um, that's, that's a good question. It's, it's tough to say, because each community does want to tailor it differently. Most extreme example, I guess you could say, would be Ann Arbor. Ann Arbor, uh, was in the forefront of all of these. There, the, the quantities they're allowing are, um, I'm not sure if they're based on some type of per capita number or something to that effect, but they, they're very, I guess you could say, they're very welcoming to the, the industry. Where there are, but then you have the fact that the vast majority of all municipalities in the state prohibit recreational use at this time. They are, uh, opening up to them, uh, and I think that is, um, based on the approach that, uh, when you see these facilities, when, when one municipality sees them and other municipalities, depending on how they're operating and how they're impacting the, the, the local community, then at some point they feel comfortable with it. And so to at least ask these questions. Because once again, this is just, we're just here as a resource to present an initial approach, and then you direct us as the best way to, to, uh, regulate these. But because there are a lot of different tools you can, you can use, uh, for this. For example, when it comes to the specific adult use marijuana sections, uh, when it comes to special use standards, I strongly recommend, and it's in the ordinance, that there are specific standards that they have to meet for, uh, for the odor control, for se- security, and for wastewater treatment. Because those are different aspects, especially when it comes to a grower, that could negatively impact adjacent uses. So in order, so it's similar to other types of uses that might have characteristics that could maybe create a lot of noise or create a lot of odor from, from like a manufacturing process. It's important that the zoning be used to regulate its, um, those aspects of the marijuana businesses that could negatively impact, specifically odor, security, and wastewater. So getting back to your question, uh, you know, everyone does that a little bit differently. I will say that some communities also are, uh, concerned with the litigation aspect of, uh, marijuana, but mainly because there's been a history in some other communities in which they were, uh, they thought they had it on the right track, and then their approach was shot down. I will say that the majority of those rea- reasonings is about procedural aspects that they didn't follow. Like something like they probably should have followed the Open Meetings Act and that sort of thing. So when it comes to best practices, uh, this is the reason we went with this approach. Number one, to be consistent and to do a slow rollout. Uh, you already have some experience with the regulations for the grower, processor, uh, safety compliance, secure transporter, and provisioning. And that's why we think to introduce this, it would be the best practice to, to have the same, same standards and be consistent with the setbacks and with, with all those aspects of medical for the adult use.
Okay. And one, one final question on this, this is, uh, this is more based on current events. I read somewhere that the federal government is finally awa- lie, allowing their federal labs to test marijuana and to do some testing. Is, is that, and they said that was perhaps a, uh, prelude to eventually, you know, federal loosening of the, uh, the, the criminality associated with marijuana. Is that your knowledge, uh, to be truthful? And I know what I read was true, but what is you, since you are closer to this than most of us in this room?
Well, um, mainly I, I gleaned my information also from newspaper articles and then also just trying to go to the actual departments and research their, their different approaches. I hadn't heard that the federal government was, uh, looking into, uh, more testing-
Yeah.
-in terms of the effects on, on it. I do think that's the, i- it's often been said that that's the, the proper approach, because, um, as Net mentioned by some people in the public, they, they've said that, you know, sometimes there's not, even, even the state itself is having issues, say, with, um, uh, edibles, because the, the manufacturing of the edibles doesn't always have consistent THC throughout it. So therefore, and then also you have the fact that a person that weighs a hundred pounds, uh, eats, has a consumable is going to be different than someone like myself that would have, have that consumable. So, um, there's no, there's not a lot of information about it. So yes, I think testing about it would be the initial aspect. And then other things like, uh, whether the financing rules get changed to allow for the industry to, um, that would be another key aspect. And then other things like whether the financing rules get changed to allow for the industry to, that would be another key aspect of whether it's incorporated or not. But there is a, you know, it's, it's also one of those things that technically it's still legal at the federal level. And at any point in time, if the, the federal system wanted to, they could come down. But it's been historic practice continued through all, through, through administrations of both parties to, to have a hands-off approach to states that are endeavoring in this, in this business.
Through the chair, if I could, one more. Could you go to, I don't want to skip over slide twenty-two. Yes. So one other item in the text amendment would be to eliminate medical marijuana facilities from the Northland ODD. If you recall, we, we added that provision when, when there was a different developer. The current overlay development district developer prohibits marijuana use at that site. And we would just like to clean up the text by removing that as an allowable use. Because right now with the ODD governs what types of uses can be in there currently. So that's the only other amendment.
Exactly. And then as, as a zoning amendment, there are, we took this opportunity to address some other issues, specifically that. And then also allowing that, we have to go through and amend each individual article that allows the, for both medical and adult use in the respective zoning districts, which I mentioned. So that's what, is in your packet. It's a zoning ordinance amendment, but I believe will be combined with other ordinance language at a point.
This particular one will go on its own, will stand on its own.
So these, all the sections that are related to marijuana are proposed for amendment. So once again, this is the first grant. So if there's, take any other additional questions you might have.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Yes, thank you. First of all, this is a great presentation. I really appreciate it. I like how you explained the differences to us and the slides were very, very helpful. My question through the chair to the planner is, are we looking at a social equity piece as well?
Well, the, the social equity piece will be part and parcel to the licensing, which Ms. King will be handling.
Mm-hmm.
But that is, that is a provision of the licensing. And as, as Myra has stated, and he can, he can jump in. For example, the city could decide that twenty-five percent of the revenue that's collected through taxes gets reinvested into areas that have been disproportionately affected by marijuana and the regu, the, the, the legal system dealing with minorities and marijuana. So that, that is a socially, social equity part. There could be provision for certain other disadvantaged individuals getting some priority as far as licensing. You could look at giving some priority to existing medical marijuana facilities. Those items will be vetted through the licensing portion, which will be following part and parcel to our zoning. And either Ms. King or Mr. Ortega could, could elaborate a little bit more on that. But tonight is really focusing on the zoning text amendments to allow for adult use regulations.
Okay. And I'd also like to see education somewhere in here because we need to explain what we're doing if we're going, I mean, just for better understanding. Even with this particular presentation tonight, as you see and hear, we still have a lot of questions. So this being new to a lot of people here in the city, we could just, and I don't know the best way to do it since we're just discussing it. I just feel that education should be a piece. And I believe if we talk to some of the owners that they would be willing to explain the uses and all the different things, much like what you've done here. And just let them know that they're partnering with the community and not coming in to cause any division or anything. I think information is just helpful. So I would look for some kind of education, information, definitions, whatever, in the communities that will be, you know, within the city. Thank you.
And, and just to follow up real briefly, as I mentioned, the social equity program that the state has is about, actually, they've, their approach has actually been reflective of their experience that Detroit has had because Detroit has tried several times to, to do a program that was trying to be equitable to the, the communities that have been in disadvantage. Fortunately, they've typically, those ordinance has been shot down. But we do, I do believe that the program that the state has presented gives the city a good, City of Southfield a good framework because, because it's starting to have these applicants submit the social equity plans. And then those plans, once again, have different categories for things like the corporate spending plan, a community reinvestment plan. And, but I do think it's highly to, in order for, for, the most defensible approach for the city would be not to quantify or specify specific standards, but let the applicants present it. Because then, based on the applicant's submittals, you can have, have a very good determination as to what, how different they are going to be. Because, because there are definitely some plans that were submitted at the state level that were very detailed and they had very specific standards. And even before the social equity plan, I will say that when I go and review applications for other municipalities, they actually do, the businesses themselves do have an education component typically. And so it's a matter of working with those businesses and they, at least at this point in time, they do seem to be very willing to be, to provide resources for the, for the city as, to address all the, all the items of concern.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Hoag?
Yeah, I just have one quick question. So for the adult use, I see that there were required business hours. Is the same true for the medical side?
Yes, it's the same hours.
It's the same, okay. I just didn't see it in this document we have, but I'm sure it was just condensed. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. I agree with the educational portion. I think we've been, we've said that several times. And, you know, we haven't put anything together yet, and I'd like to see something done. And this was a very helpful presentation, so thank you. To the planner, is there a map that identifies, if we're talking about the rezoning tonight, that identifies the areas we're discussing?
We, as, as I've stated previously, it's kind of a moving target, but we will have, we can prepare a map for next week looking at GIS at current, current uses and the buffering. That map is not static in the, in the sense that if, for example, if a childcare facility or, or religious institution moves in or moves out, it may or may not knock out a potential site. But it would be a snapshot in time of where the potential uses could be. We did, we do, did do something similar during the medical marijuana review. We identified half a dozen potential sites based on the buffering. But we know that some businesses have been proactive to, to try to qualify new sites by encouraging businesses to relocate. So if, if we prepare the map, just understand that that's only a snapshot as of that time. That it's not something that, that could, that could change in the future.
And the map would be in the industrial zone?
Well, again, we allow provisioning centers in B three, so that would be one map of potential sites. The, the safety compliance are, are allowed in any of our OS or other districts that allow medical. The secure transport, processing, and grow facilities are related to industrial districts. So we would have to create a separate map for each of the five different types of uses.
And the retail is?
Retail, it would be tied to B three with the, with the separation requirements.
And that's what it presently is?
Yes.
Why did I think it was IS?
Well, the grow, processing, and secure transport are regulated to industrial types of uses. And as Mr. Ortega has said, we, we try to follow similar, like agricultural, industrial, warehousing, manufacturing, processing are similar to industrial. The retail operation is similar to B three, our, our general business district. The safety compliance is similar to medical testing facilities. So for us to be defensible, we categorize them into similar types of districts that allow similar types of uses.
I'm just speaking for myself, but I personally would like to see a map with it highlighted like we did when we first discussed the medical marijuana. It would be helpful for a big city. And I understand it could be, you know, a little variance here or there. I don't know if anyone else is interested in a map.
Yeah.
I agree.
That would be fine. That would be helpful.
Any other, any other questions?
Oh. Just, just a few comments with reference to the rezoning and, you know, just to keep in mind. The federal government still has not approved the cannabis sale. There was an article in the newspaper today that there are some facilities that are going to go into the infused beverages. So we will be prohibiting that. Is that correct? So example?
Well, the issue with that is that the state regulates what products can and cannot be sold. To best of my knowledge, I believe beverages are not prohibited, are not allowed. They're specifically prohibited. Matter of fact, I think they might be even prohibited in the state statute. I might be wrong on that.
I, I.
But I haven't, I haven't read the state, I haven't, I thought I saw that in the state, in one of the state statutes, but.
Can we get a clarification on that? Because there, there is a business out there that is going into the infused beverage business. And the article stated they will be holding, they will be selling the beverages in their store. So does that mean if this is approved, the, the stores in Southfield can sell them?
Well, so there's two aspects of that. One is the fact that the product that actually has THC and the regulated level, and THC, that specific chemical that's in marijuana, that's what can only be sold in a facility that's regulated by the state through these statutes. There's other aspects of CBD cannabinoid oils that technically are not regulated by the state because they do not have that specific component. So therefore, that's why you can see gas stations that say they have CBD oils and that sort of thing. Because it's supposed to be this different type of product that is not marijuana technically. But then to go back to your original question, initially, we do think that it, that you have to, when it comes to creating regulations, you have to only regulate those aspects which you have been enabled by the state statute. So that's specifically through the zoning and its locations. And then some aspects of operation that are specific to the actual general use. Specific items such as, like the things that they can sell, that's actually regulated by the state. And there, I don't believe the, the local municipalities have any authority granted to them to regulate what can and can't be sold within the facility. If the state, if the state decides that suddenly beverages are permitted, then any retailer, as long as they have the right licensing from both the city and the state, then they could sell that beverage.
But again, that would have to be at a special store, to not be at, you know, Kroger's or Monde.
No, oh, no, no, no. No, no, no.
Okay. And then the four or five areas that we're looking at would prohibit a social consumption lounge?
Absolutely.
They're saying that's also the next popular thing coming forward?
Yeah, yes.
That is, that is definitely listed as prohibited.
There's no public consumption of marijuana. You can do it in the privacy of your home. The, those consumption bars would allow you to bring marijuana to consume with others similar. But we're, we're recommending at this time that we don't allow those types of uses.
Okay. And will it all, does that also include eliminating them from events? I read that, you know, at one point beer tents were popular. Now it's going to be cannabis tents. Is that going to be eliminated?
That would be a type of use that, within the ordinance right now, it specifically, it specifically lists those, those types of uses that are already created. But then it also specifically says, and any other use created by the CRA. So therefore, if the next month CRA comes up with another type of use, it would be prohibited by this draft text. Only those specific uses that we've defined as permitted would be allowed.
So we're, we're not allowing the four-one-one or whatever the, the, is it four-one-nine or?
I forget.
The, the types of events that are outdoors that Ann Arbor allows, those would be prohibited. So temporary, temporary use of marijuana products would not be allowed under our proposal.
Okay. So example, some of the festivals we have here in South.
That's correct.
Okay.
Right. And there are other aspects of those festivals that, and uses that would follow their other zoning regulations that you would regulate. So there, there'd be other ways to ensure that they're not within the city. And just to back up to another question you had previously in regards to beverages. Within the MRTMA, technically, the marijuana infused product definition means a topical formulation, tincture, beverage, edible substance, or similar product containing marijuana. So, so the beverages in theory could be permitted by the state, but they can only be sold in a marijuana retailer.
Okay. And then I just wanted to share this with council that there presently are a hundred and thirty communities in Michigan that allow recreational. There's one thousand three hundred and seventy-seven that have opt out of selling the recreational. And again, you know, marijuana remains illegal at the federal level. So that's probably another reason to Mr. Frazier, the banks cannot support the loans or anything because they're backed by the, the federal government. Thank you.
Council, any other questions? Okay, thank you.
So through the chair, this has been scheduled for a public hearing on Tuesday, January seventeenth. We will, we can give a more abbreviated overview of this prior to the public hearing. Council does not have to act at that time, but we would like to at least find out from the public pros and cons. And, and then should, should council want to act on it, then it would have to come back at your next regular meeting for enactment. During that time, Ms. King will be working with the legislative committee to vet the licensing. That would also have to be brought back to council. And then we would have to set a date for accepting applications because the prioritization and the intake would have to, you know, specifically follow some time, timestamp date so that when we're vetting, we're vetting those applications, we have to compare them to the prioritization.
And next week you'll also have a map for a council?
We'll work on, well, there should be a map for each of the districts.
Correct. Okay. Councilman Frazier?
Yes, I know Detroit is struggling with this. And would you please bring the, the latest information on what's going on in Detroit? Also, any neighboring cities that, on the map that was just asked for. So we really know what we're talking about and don't do something that we have buyer's remorse on later on.
Okay. Thank you. All right, next we're at the council portion of our meeting. Mr. Frazier, did you have anything for this evening? Councilwoman Banks?
I would just like to wish everyone a very happy and healthy two thousand and twenty-three. Also like to remind everyone, even though it's a new year, COVID is still out there. There is another variant. It seems like it's affecting the lungs and many people are coming down with pneumonia. So just please be careful and cautious when you're out and about in large crowds. Looking forward to working with everyone this year. Thank you.
Councilman Cruz?
Yes, just want to welcome again our newest council member, Councilwoman Hoag. And it seems like she's already off to a great start. So I think we got good things to look forward to from her being part of this team here. So I think we got good things to look forward to from her being part of this team here. So looking forward to continuing to work with you.
Councilwoman Taylor?
I have nothing new to add. Happy New Year to everyone, and again, welcome to Carrata. Piggyback on what Councilwoman Banks said, please stay healthy and safe. COVID is real, and RSV is real, so protect ourselves in crowds and that kind of thing. So with that, that's it. Thank you. Have a good night.
Councilman Brightwell?
I want to echo everything that's been said, and also welcome Ms. Hoag on board. And obviously, she seems like she's well informed, so I'm glad to hear that, that you're involved. Ms. Taylor brought something that, that is dear to my heart, which is, you know, health and safety. Can someone tell me why we decided to take these petitions down? And I don't mind health and safety. I'm a big advocate. When I had employees, that's the biggest thing. We dealt with health and safety and didn't want them to get injured. But was there rationale, or was there medical advice to take these petitions down? I looked at other council people, council positions online, and they seem to be still up in December. So I guess there's an answer.
Through the chair, to Councilman Brightwell, that was a decision when I was chair that was made. We did talk to the entire council, but as you know, the count for COVID had went down. So we were, the CDC had said it was safe for us to come back and come together. As a matter of fact, we weren't, some places, you weren't even required to wear a mask. So the decision was made to remove the partitions based on the new information that was out there, keeping our safety first in our minds at all times. So yes, but we did discuss it with the entire council, and you also agreed to have those petitions removed.
Well, me and one other, myself and one other council, we do not recall that conversation with the whole council. Okay, well, we agreed, and I was, I had one other council agree with, that's why I brought it up.
We did.
And that's also why we're still sitting separate versus having, you know, the city attorney and the city administrator up on the.
I'm talking about the petitions.
Correct.
The petitions are.
We agreed to remove the petitions, but still stay a little bit more distance between us.
Okay, well, let me, Mr. Cruz, you know my, use your name, right? Mr. Cruz, now, we do not recall that conversation among the seven of us. We could take down these petitions. So, okay, if it was discussed, it was decided, I'm a team player, okay, I just die for the team, you know? So, you know, whatever.
If the council feels that we want to put the petitions back up, we can definitely do that.
Well, there's a variant right now that FOSI is generating in the United States. There's XBB 1.5. So that's another COVID variant that is out there. So if we, and this is, you know, I'm serious about making light of it. Health and safety of the employees is about the biggest thing you have to deal with. So if we ever make, to go back to these, and I looked at different council around the country, they, a lot of them still got these petitions. If we ever make these decisions, just make sure that we document the fact that we talked to seven council people on this day, at this point in time, and we decided to take these things down, or to wing it. So, okay, but I got my answer. It was spoken to, and my ears were closed, I guess.
It wasn't a vote or anything. We were just talking, and we asked the questions amongst us. So, and everybody was in agreement that it was okay to take them down, so.
I was there.
Yes.
Part of the irony was to talk to a fellow elected official who moved the petition so that you could hear.
Okay, well, I just, I just remember this joke, Willie Nelson, they accused Willie Nelson of something. He said, "Was I there?" And so I'm just, I'm just, you know, if you guys, if you guys say that was it, it was But I do want to, at some point in time, revisit this whole petition thing, because I think they are beneficial.
Okay. Councilwoman Hoag?
I just would like to thank the council again. It's an honor and privilege to be sitting here amongst you all. Everyone has been very supportive, the entire council board, the administration, the mayor, and I just appreciate everybody's support. The only thing outside of that, I'd say, is in coming in, I was listening to CNN, and they said today was National Law Enforcement Day. So I'd just like to wish a happy law enforcement day, and a thank you to the Southfield's law enforcement community. And again, I thank you all. And I know usually Councilwoman Banks and Taylor usually take care of that, so I was waiting for them to do it. Thank you.
Councilman Frazier, did you have anything this evening?
Yeah, I'd just like to wish everyone a Happy New Year and hope that 2023 is more successful than 2022 has been. I do have some concerns with the number of firearms problems that have popped up on the news, most recently a six-year-old shot his school teacher. And I think that's something that should be on our table, that we can discuss in connection with our police department and the school system to make Southfield a better place. We're proud of it. We're here trying to make Southfield even a more attractive and welcome place to people. So we need to put our heads together because we do have a great deal of knowledge around this, around this table that can help us move forward, but we need to get the right people at the table. Thank you.
Thank you. And I also would like to wish everyone a Happy New Year, and hopefully, this is going to be a great year. Welcome to our newest council member, Councilwoman Hoag, and to our acting city clerk, Ms. Bettis. Thank you for stepping in. We appreciate it, and welcome, welcome to the big show. Also, I wanted to, one of the, one complaint or concern that I kept receiving from many residents was about our ice arena, but I'm happy to report that starting this weekend, Open Skate will return to the ice arena on Saturdays and Sundays from 12:00 to 1:30. And also, Sticks and Puck will be available Sunday mornings from 10:30 to 11:50. There are some charges and other fees for both Open Skate, skate rental, if you want to come for Sticks and Pucks, but you can call the Southfield Sports Arena at 248-796-4640 for more details. Also, this coming Monday is going to be the Martin Luther King Peace Walk. There, it will be a walk starting at 9:00 a.m. at Hope United Methodist Church, and they will be followed by a program here at City Hall in the pavilion at 11:00 a.m. So for more information, you can go to the city's website. There's some information there as well. The, some of the council members here have spoken about health and safety with COVID and everything, and I just wanted to give a shout out to the behind-the-scenes workers at City Hall, our facilities team. They are the ones that you don't see all the time, but they're the ones who are constantly cleaning and sanitizing and making sure that our facility is clean and appropriate at all times. So thank you to those folks for all that they do. You know, even when we leave here after our meetings, you see them still here making sure that it's ready for the next business day. So thank you to that team. With that, Mr. Mayor?
Well, everything I could have said has been said, so welcome. Glad you're both here with us, and Happy New Year. I do have some good news to share. The Friends of Southfield Public Arts applied for a grant from the Community Foundation of Southeast Michigan in support of our Nine Mile Connectivity Recreation Corridor Initiative that is stretching from Hazel Park to the border of Noby. And I was informed the other day that we are the recipients of a $50,000 grant that will go for signage, placemaking, art on Nine Mile. We're concentrating right now on Phase 1, which is Greenfield to Losher. That was part of the sidewalk that, or pathway. The planner always reminds me, don't call them sidewalks, pathways, because that's what they are. They're connectivity routes that we're creating throughout the city. And so part of that is like we've done with all of our other pathways. We've installed things, so it's not, you're just not walking, you're, it's an experience. So whether it's art, benches, or birdhouse, or a dog, dog station, rest station, whatever. So, and we are, have the support of Lawrence Tech on new signage, welcome signage to Southfield at Nine Mile and Greenfield. So pleased to report that to you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, city administrator?
Thank you, Mr. President. Happy New Year. Want to just let the public know that the city did submit its annual audit. I want to recognize Austin Michaels, Anana Zoo, and the rest of our finance, our fiscal services group for ensuring that we made that deadline, previously shared that message with council. Since we last met in December, I've been able to spend time with just about every department. Really excited about some of the things our Parks and Rec Department has going on right now behind the ice arena, new park is being installed. Went out towards Sims Park and was out at Miller Park and was able to watch people utilize the paths and do some, you know, just get out, not be, the prep in preparing for council meetings. So a little bit of a refresher and able to get out in the field a little bit more. Public Works, we got through the Christmas Eve storm, and I think we were anticipating much more snow than we did get, but the team was ready, the trucks were out, and we weathered that two and a half days, and I'm grateful that they were out in the field and they, you know, weren't able to be home with their loved ones, but they were out there doing their jobs. Fire Department, with the new officers being sworn in. Today, they were training new guys how to drive their rigs behind City Hall. The tower is on schedule. It'll be going in this March. We're able to get much of the foundation in, so we're pretty excited about that. Very optimistic about what we have in front of us in 2023. In particular, we continue to monitor the volume of grants that are in front of us. Every department has an opportunity to obtain some funding for different things. In fact, over the break, Parks and Rec submitted a grant to Oakland County for senior activities, and so there's quite a bit, and we're very optimistic about 2023. Those are my comments. The wisdom, three years ago, we, was the first mention in this chamber about COVID, and we didn't know what we were facing. It's clear we continue to still manage our way through it. Lots of mixed opinions. Ann Arbor schools put their mask mandate back in, and the west side of the state, there's a county acting like it never happened. These things are real, and, you know, be cautious, respectful of each other. We have that in our own workforce, how we interact with the public. But we will continue to work our way through this. Mr. President, I appreciate the shout out to our facilities group. Every time we get an employee who's possibly tested, they go in immediately, they sanitize the group, take the work areas. So we continue to take all of those cautions, and I know that group appreciates the recognition. That's all I have this evening. Thank you.
All right, thank you. City attorney?
Good evening. I have nothing further to add. I just want to say Happy New Years to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. City clerk?
Good evening to our citizens and you all. Happy New Year.
Okay. City treasurer, city planner, anything else to add?
Nothing to add. Happy and healthy New Year to everyone.
All right, thank you. All right, we're looking to schedule. The next item on our agenda is a closed session.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I make a motion that we go into closed session. To discuss the performance of the evaluation.
Support?
Yeah. It has been moved by Councilwoman Taylor, supported by Councilwoman Banks, to go into I'm going to read the full thing. I got you. To go into a closed session in connection with a performance evaluation scheduled for tonight pursuant to Section 8A of the Open Meetings Act, PA 1976, number 267. All those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, we need a roll call. Roll call.
Thank you. Councilmember Mandelbaum?
Sorry?
Council president, Mayor Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Banks?
Yes.
Councilmember Brightwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember Frazier?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoag?
Yes.
Motion passed.
We will now move into the other room for our closed session.